Pfizer vaccine. And that does have some impacts on our country. And it may have impacts on our public health department or public health agency. And so we're going to begin to, we have begun to analyze that. What do we have to do differently as a public health agency? And it also has an impact to the city. We have some more options now as an employer. And we're looking at that as well with our city attorney. So Annette is going to talk about the pandemic, the spiking of cases, and also begin to give us some initial thoughts on the full approval of the Pfizer vaccine.
Thank you. Annette Rodriguez, Health Director. So I am going to give the COVID-19 update statistics. Next slide, please. I think this first slide is very important, and I think it tells the story. So if you look at August of 2021, we're at 9,017 COVID cases. So you can easily see by this graph that we surpassed the winter COVID cases, that we had the peak in January, and we're about to surpass the summer peak that we had July of 2020. Next slide. This just shows the progression from week to week. But I think it's really important as well, because if you look at July 4th, July 11th, July 18th, the week of those, you'll see the July 4th week was 199 COVID cases. July 11th was 404 COVID cases. July 18th was 815. Now, if you'll move over to August 1st, you'll see what happened. 2,180 COVID positives. August 8th, 2,700 COVID positives. And August 15th, 3,500 COVID positives here in Nuones County. Next slide. We've added this slide here because I think it really tells you also what's happening with our younger population. So we've done it by age, and we've showed the pie. 12% are from ages a few months to nine years of age. And then if you look at the orange colored slice of pie, that's about 15%. That's ages 10 to 19. And then the gray at 20% is ages 20 to 29. So if you look at from ages 0 to 29, that almost encompasses 50% of the whole pie. So a lot more kids are getting COVID-19 currently. But you can see that also 30 to 39 has a very large slice of the pie at 17%. And then the other colors as well. But that's important because it shows you that our children are getting COVID more with this Delta variant. Next slide. These are the hospitalizations, and they continue to rise. You could see very easily. The last one that you see on here was the 23rd, and you see 428 hospitalizations. And you see 104 ICU. Just so that everyone knows, in July of 2020, the highest hospitalizations, when we had our highest peak last summer, was 430 hospitalizations. And we're at 428. And I'm already looking at the numbers for tomorrow, and they're at 442. So we surpassed the last summer peak. Next slide. These are the vaccine breakthrough cases in Nuones County. These are important because these are individuals that have been fully vaccinated with both doses of Pfizer or both doses of Moderna or the one dose of J&amp;J. And still, they have gotten infected. 574 individuals in Nuones County that have vaccine breakthrough cases. 65 of those individuals of the 574 were hospitalized. 16 deaths from breakthrough cases. And the different vaccines that they received, 276, 196, 101, and 1 unknown. And I know Councilman Hernandez had asked me for the percentages, which makes a lot more sense. But that would mean that I'd have to know the denominator. And I do not have the denominator data, which tells me how many total Moderna cases have been given in Nuones County. I have the denominator data for Nuones County, what we've given in Moderna and Pfizer and J&amp;J. But I don't have for every provider in Nuones County that has given vaccines. So as soon as I have that information, I will share the percentages. Next slide. So the CDC booster information is basically, we're hearing the booster is about to be approved. The booster dose just refers to another dose of vaccine that's given to someone who built enough protection initially after being vaccinated fully, so having the two vaccines. But then that protection decreased over time. So this is called waning or weakening of their immunity. The recommendation is going to be that after eight months after getting that second dose or that final dose for J&amp;J, that they will receive a booster vaccine. This should begin September 20th of 2021, but it still needs to be fully vetted and approved. It's going to be specifically for Pfizer and Moderna. J&amp;J will be at a future date. So remember, J&amp;J was not started that vaccine until months after Pfizer and Moderna, the mRNA came out. So we're waiting to hear on the J&amp;J. As soon as we know more information, we'll let you know. And we're also waiting to get full approval to give that booster. As soon as we're ready, we will start administering boosters. We're working with our luminaire software system so that they can actually alert the individuals that were vaccinated by the Health Department, that it's their month. And it's been eight months since their last vaccine. Now they can come back in and get their booster. We do not want people to get boosters early. People are going to try to get their booster earlier than the eight months. You don't want to do that because you're actually wasting product. The vaccine is effective for at least eight months, and so we want you to wait and get the booster at the right time. Next slide. So this is the FDA, that City Manager Zanoni mentioned. The FDA gave a final approval yesterday, full approval for the Pfizer vaccine. So that was great news, but what does it really mean? So for one, we had a lot of people tell us that they were not going to get vaccinated until FDA gave full approval. So for those people that said that, full approval is here. It's now time to get vaccinated. And what it really means is, is the vaccine really effective? Is it safe? We just want a lot of data to make sure before we get fully vaccinated. And that is what the full approval tells you, that they have looked at so many different vaccines, and they can tell that this vaccine is very effective. And so at that point, they're able to give full approval. And so that's where we are now. The other question that a lot of people are asking is, so now can we mandate it in the school? So the FDA does not mandate vaccines. They only give approval for the manufacturers, saying that this is a good vaccine. They've done that. But the ACIP, the Advisory Council on Immunization Practices, that we've all heard so much about, that actually is a council to CDC, they are the ones that can actually say, yes, now we're going to add the COVID vaccine into the childhood vaccine requirements for back to school. And so we believe that that will happen probably for the next school year, since the school year has already started, and that it'll be one of the requirements. The vaccine approval currently is only for those 16 years of age and older. It is not for those 12 to 15 at this time. Remember, that vaccine came later. It wasn't initially during the 16 and older age group. So we believe at a later time that also will be FDA approved. So having the FDA approval can move a lot of these initiatives. I think employers are wanting to know, you know, can we mandate vaccines? And so, yes, the private employers are able to do a lot of these things. Some of the universities are already doing that. But that's what the FDA approval helps us to accomplish. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Councilman Pestley.
Thank you, Mayor. Annette, could we go back to your beginning graph that shows? Okay, yeah. This is our weekly cases from June of this year. Is that correct? Actually, back one more. I think it should, yeah, that one. Okay. So this shows total number of people who have tested positive for COVID, but not necessarily hospitalized.
That's correct. These are just COVID-positive cases in Nuones County.
So if we go forward now to the graph that shows the ones, next, go ahead. Go ahead. That one, that shows the number of cases that ended up in the hospital or in ICU.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, good. It'd be good to overlay those two just for the sake of seeing it. Can you tell us now, Annette, because I get a lot of questions. I've posted a lot of information the last few days on my Facebook page. And I've tried to field as many questions as I could. But what information do you have on the variant, the Delta variant, or whatever they call it? Have y'all tested for that? Are you seeing a lot of positives for that, or do you know yet?
You know, what we do know, and that's a great question. Thank you for that. We have over 93% of the cases that we actually are testing that are positive. We believe those to all be due to the Delta variant, because that's what the state of Texas shows, as well as the United States. We have only sent out, I believe, 11, or maybe a little bit more, since the 11 specimens to get geno sequenced for Delta. And we have received eight back that showed that they were Delta variant. But the other ones have not come back yet. And we were initially told between two and four weeks. It's been over that time. But we believe because of the number of specimens that have been sent to DSHS, as well as Texas Tech, that they're just still working on these at this point. So while we don't have, you know, out of the 200 cases yesterday, we don't have definitive knowledge that 93% of those were Delta. We do believe that it follows the rest of the state of Texas, and that is the case.
Okay. So right now, looking at that graph that shows the total number of cases that we have now cumulative, you think, you believe based on your statistical analysis that 93% of those are a result of the variant?
Absolutely.
Okay. And so the other question I get is, okay, if this is a variant, then why should I get vaccinated? Does the vaccine that was created originally help with this variant?
That's a great question as well. But we also know that by looking at all of these individuals that were vaccinated and looking at all of these individuals that are getting sick with COVID-19, we know that the people that are vaccinated are less likely to end up hospitalized. So we know, and they're also less likely to get COVID. And so we know that the vaccine currently works against this Delta variant. So that's why it's important for them to get vaccinated.
Okay. And what you're telling us today is, if you're healthy, you're not positive, you should wait until eight months after you have had your second shot before you get the third shot.
Right.
Which is not a booster, it's just another shot. Correct?
So, okay, so the third shot is for only those that are immunocompromised. The booster is for those individuals. It's just a third shot. So it shows that the vaccine has waned over time. And so that's again, by them looking at all the statistics and seeing the vaccine breakthrough cases, they're starting to see is increasing. And so they know that there's some waning of the vaccine around eight months after their second vaccine. And that's at the time that they are going to approve or planning to approve for the booster, which is a third vaccine to boost that immunity.
Okay. You just confused me by what you said originally. And it's easy to confuse me, so don't take that personal. If, for example, I've had both my vaccinations, I'm not positive for COVID, should I get a third shot? And if so, when?
Yes. As soon as it's approved. We believe it's going to be approved to begin September, the week of September 20th. Once it's approved, yes, you should get your third booster, or third shot, your booster vaccine. But yours would be eight months after your second vaccine.
Okay.
So it's not necessarily going to be September 20th. September 20th is really, we started here with the hospital staff. So that's about the time they're going to need boosters. And then, you know, later, we did Health Department staff, so then they're going to need boosters. And then later, we opened it up to more individuals, you know, so different tiers that we opened it up to. So it's going to be very similar to that to determine when it's time for you to get your booster. But it's eight months after your second vaccine is going to be the time.
Now, if you're immunocompromised, you should get it when?
So that's already been approved, so they should already be getting it.
So you can get it anytime. You don't have to wait. Even if you've had your two shots, you can go ahead and get another one.
Right. At least 28 days after your second shot, you can get your third shot.
Okay. In closing, just two things real quickly. One, can we have a copy of your presentation today? I'd love to have that, just so I can review it. Secondly, thank you for all the information you've been providing for all of us and for me personally. I know I've reached out to you a couple of times, and we certainly appreciate that. And then I just want to say, and I've taken a lot of hits for this. I've lost some friends over this. But I'm encouraging everybody to get vaccinated. It's time for us to get our head out of the sand. And, you know, I remember when I started first grade in elementary school, and that's a long time ago. I realize that. Most of you weren't born. But the first, they lined us all up to check to make sure we had a smallpox vaccination scar. And because I don't scar easily, I got to take the smallpox vaccination twice. So, and it didn't kill any of us. It was a good thing. And so we need, as leaders in this community, just to encourage people to get vaccinated. For God's sakes, we don't want to see another economic shutdown of our city, of our state, and of our country. There will be dire consequences if that happens again. So please, if you're listening to my voice and you're not vaccinated, please do so unless your doctor tells you you shouldn't. And you should always listen to your doctors and what they say. But again, thank you very much for the information. If you could provide us a copy of that, I would sincerely appreciate it.
Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Annette, for clarity, so the words booster and third vaccination. Same?
No, different. So third vaccine is for those that are immune compromised. So the vaccine really never probably worked for them. The first and second, it didn't give them any antibodies. So they need that third dose. For booster, it's for everybody else. The vaccines worked fine, but now it's starting to weaken or wane. And so now they're going to need a booster starting the week of September 20th.
But is the composition of those two the same?
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
Okay. That's what I wanted to.
Oh, yes, yes.
So the composition of a booster shot and a third vaccine is exactly the same? They're just going to work differently within the person based on the immunocompromised or eight months out and the waning of the effect, the effective of the vaccine?
That's correct.
Got it. Okay. Great.
Yes. It's the exact same amount, the .3 mL for the Pfizer. Same exact vaccine that you got for the first dose and the second dose.
Right.
Is the same for the third, or the booster is just different timeframes.
Got it. Okay, wonderful. We have a few more questions. Councilman Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. In light of the approval from the FDA, I wanted to get an idea of what the effectiveness of all the different types of vaccinations are against the Delta variant. Do you have like the percentages for Moderna, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Pfizer versus the Delta?
Yes, I do. But let me revisit that before I say it today. But I do have that information, and I'll bring it back to you.
Okay. You know, the way I'm seeing this is that this is looking more and more like a, you know, the flu, a virus change, right? You get a different type of vaccination for the flu shot annually. This seems like it's going in that direction. Is this something that you foresee as a new, different vaccination every year in conjunction with the variants that are coming out?
Yes. We believe that, you know, that COVID will be endemic and that we will continue to have to live with it, and that it will change, and we will have to, you know, make sure that we have the correct vaccines that are needed, you know, for the following year. You know, it could be longer too. The booster could last more than a year. And so maybe it's every other year before they need to get another vaccine. All of that is still being studied. Again, the COVID virus is still very new, even though it's almost been two years. It's very new. And the more people that don't get vaccinated, I think we all know, the more able the virus is to mutate.
Well, I mean, if you're looking at this from perspective, all viruses mutate, right? I mean, the flu is different from it was 20 years ago, from it was last year. I see this as continuing. But if it goes down the same route, it'll eventually be like the flu shot, where some people get it, some people don't. It'll go onto the, kind of the, that kind of routine.
Right.
So looking at the percentage of people getting flu shots every year, what is that percentage?
It's very low, to be honest with you. But we've had flu, we've lived with flu for so many years, you know? And so more people have a response, you know, against flu. So they have some protection against it. But yes, the number of people that received flu vaccines probably was the highest last year. Again, I can give you that information. But that was only because we were really pushing to get flu vaccines along with the COVID vaccine, so that way they could differentiate, you know, before if they got sick and had to go to the hospital. So, but the number of people that get flu vaccines is very low from year to year currently.
Okay. So I'll just look for the information on the effectiveness versus the Delta variant. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Smith.
Thank you, Annette. You showed us the information. How, we're getting a lot more positives amongst the voters on there. I have seen within the school district. So are the districts consistent in the outbreak? Or is there a range with it? Are we publishing that data?
We have not been publishing it. We are trying to keep up with it. You know, it's a lot of kids that are getting COVID positive in the schools. So we definitely can look at putting that. DSHS has it published on their website, but they're very far behind, to be honest with you.
Okay. So it's dated information and?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, and thanks for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Annette, thank you. Oh, do we, I'm sorry. Councilman Barera.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, Annette, the most common question that I get asked all the time when we see the data on positive cases is how many were vaccinated? And I don't know if we can provide that information on a regular basis. You know, the mayor on her Facebook posted an awesome graphic of, I think, in the past, I think it was July 1 to August 15th, there might have been 450 positive breakthrough cases. And there was like 8,900 cases of the individuals that were non-vaccinated. And that's just a useful tool for us to spread out to the community the importance of getting vaccinated. And I know I got a lot of, I'm sure she got a lot of traction on it, and I've gotten some as well. As well as those that, and, you know, I always say, I hate to make more work for you, but if you have somebody there that could get us that information, because that's the most common questions. If there's a death, you know, were they vaccinated? And did they suffer from comorbidities? And that helps us to continue to tell the story and encourage people to get vaccinated. And then to give individuals peace of mind that they have been vaccinated, and they are using their masks, and that's going to act as a deterrent. So if we could get that information, and Peter, if, you know, it used to be, we used to have, and maybe I'm missing it, but all that information on the front page of our webpage, of our website, where we were able to track that data. You know, I've got a conference that I've got to go to in Denver, and I'm most likely going to call it off, simply because everybody from the conference is going over there, and you don't know where they're coming from. But I was looking up the data there, and it was easily accessible. So if we could, you know, get that information back on the website, so that way, you know, individuals that have been vaccinated have peace of mind as well that if they're coming to visit, that they could see where. I mean, I'm sure right now it'd be difficult, but that way, individuals, we have that data out there, so that way we continue to tell the story, the importance of getting vaccinated is working. I know a couple of the breakthrough cases, and they've all recovered. And I know it's just anecdotal in nature, but in each case, one of them was, you know, a senior in their late 70s and said, the vaccine is working. So if we could somehow get some more data to have that accessible, so we can provide it.
Yes. Thank you for that. You know, as the number of cases rise, as you mentioned, it is much more difficult to be able to get that information, especially in real time. You might be able to get it from a week back. So because what's happening is all of the hospital information, we receive that from the infection control practitioners. So every day, they have a conversation with us, except on Saturday and Sunday, basically telling us this many people are hospitalized due to COVID, this many were vaccinated, this many weren't, if they know the information. As they get busier and busier, many times they tell us, you know, we just don't know today. I mean, how many were vaccinated and unvaccinated? But what we can tell you is that we had 215 hospitalized. And so they give us partial information. We did this last, the summer peak. The same thing happened. We weren't able to get the zip codes because they weren't able to provide it. And so we basically said, at this point in the emergency, we're not able to report that right now. We will be able to report that all later. But we are trying our best to get the information. What we do know is the majority of the people that are hospitalized are unvaccinated. We can clearly see that. But to keep up with that every day, just some days are just much more difficult because of the predicament we're in. And then the same thing, except we're adding something. When you come through the drive-through and get swabbed, you know, we know at the end of the day or the next day, we know if you're positive or you're not positive. And so you would think, well, then, do you know if they're vaccinated or unvaccinated? So the answer is currently no. But what we've done is we've added to our form to ask the question, are you vaccinated or unvaccinated? So we're kind of getting, you know, word of mouth, and we're trusting that they're giving us the true information. And we're going to start reporting that out as well. But what we've seen, and just starting this recently, is the majority of them are unvaccinated as well. But we wouldn't know that, even if we had a positive test, we wouldn't know vaccinated versus unvaccinated until after we contact trace them. And we're getting behind on the contact tracing because of the number of cases we're having every day. 600-plus COVID positives. It takes a lot of time to call all those positives, to talk to them about the contact tracing that needs to occur.
Okay. Well, once again, as I had indicated in the last meeting, if you need more resources, come.
Yes.
Let us know, and we'll chew on the professional that's right there to your right. So one right, one person over.
Okay. Annette, oh, Mr. Pestley?
Yes.
Yeah. In light of, Councilman Rarer, I had jotted some notes down here, and I apologize. So, and I know you don't have much to do these days, so I'm sure you have a lot of time to do this. But if you could, when you have a chance, along with this information, is give us the total number of deaths in Nuones County since January of 2020 up to today. If you have the information, the ages of those who died, and if they have, you know, pre-existing health conditions. You know, I got into a philosophical discussion with a very smart guy here the day before yesterday. In fact, he's a physician. And he said, you know, here's the deal. The number of people who are positive for COVID, who may never show bad symptoms, who may never go to the doctor, who may never get tested, but they still have it, you know, that sort of drives down the percentage of people that are sick compared to the percentage of people who are dying from this disease. But he said that doesn't take away from the fact that this disease is overwhelming our hospitals. And that's true. A good friend of mine last night, and many people here know, had to put her mother in one hospital and her father in another hospital because they both have COVID. And so those are tragic kind of things. And, you know, they were, they had refused to be vaccinated, and now they're very ill. So this is important. But people are really, as Councilman Rarer said, are really wanting the information, and we're trying to provide that to them. But at the end of the day, all that is for statistical analysis, but the bottom line is get vaccinated.
That's correct.
And don't become the worst part of these statistics.
And I would say that, Councilman Pestley, you are absolutely right. It is what we advocate for, you know, to encourage people who want to get vaccinated to get vaccinated. There are a lot of people on the line. Chief Rocha spoke with you this morning. Quickly, I think we, I don't want to misspeak, we haven't vaccinated 300, right, on the in-home program? And every single one of those, Councilman Pestley, is just, it's golden, because that's one more person that could go and, you know, spread it to hundreds of people.
Well, if you think about the fact that if a family loses a family member to this, how many people does that? Well, if you think about the fact that if a family loses a family member to this, how many people does that impact? If they lose the father? You know, the breadwinner of the family, or, you know, the the mother, or whatever the case may be, it's a tragic event. And and Chief, I did want to pass along, the young lady said the paramedics that came out and picked her parents up were very kind and very helpful. And she wanted me to let you know how much she appreciated what they did.
And I got a similar comment about, it was another story about the hospital, you know, having to go and all of that. And and he made a very, it was his mother, very, very nice comment about the parameds, how wonderful and courteous they were. But but before you do that, I just want to make certain, Annette, our primary focus is to vaccinate, correct?
That is correct.
People to get vaccinated. I just want to make that.
Yes, absolutely. We know that that can actually, you know, put an end to this pandemic. If everybody were vaccinated, we're just not there. But we need to continue to encourage people to get vaccinated. So use the other public health strategies, like using a mask, social distancing. So especially for those individuals that still choose not to get vaccinated. That's going to be very important for their safety as well.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Councilman Pusly certainly do appreciate the kind words. You know, in tragedy, the the best of us comes out, right? And so your firefighters are out there doing the best they can. I will tell you that we have been concentrating on our delivery of service, on our regular calls for service, but also the in home vaccinations that we've been doing, as well as some of the booster shots we've been giving. In the last week, we've gotten approximately 300 people vaccinated, those who want the in home vaccination, as well as the booster shot for those SOS partners that we have. I want to thank Annette and her staff with the Health Department. They have been wonderful in terms of giving us the needed vaccines that we need. And so I think it's just a great partnership of everybody trying to work together, but making sure that people who want to get vaccinated can get vaccinated, and we're trying to eliminate all of those barriers.
So for clarity, you said that 300 consists of SOS third vaccinations as well as in home?
Some some of those have been, the bulk have been now the in home that we've been getting calls for. So the bulk have been the in home. But we've also been able to vaccinate some of the SOS clients who are now asking for the third vaccine, those who meet the the standard that Annette and I have talked about, about immunocompromised people. So we're very strict as as to what we've been able to do. We haven't been giving everybody the third shot that calls for the third shot unless they meet the criteria that Annette has set forward.
Okay, and and Peter, were we going to proactively call our 3,200 seniors?
Well, the
What we've been doing, and Peter is absolutely right, we've been utilizing reverse alert in order to contact those. And so the ones that get back a hold of us, we've been able to contact. And if we don't get a call back from the reverse alert, then we're making a proactive call to those that haven't been able to contact us through reverse alert.
Right, we can we can get a lot more people reached out to with that reverse alert system. So it's been pretty effective. But as the chief said, the backup plan is just direct call them.
Great, great. Thank you so much. And Annette, thank you so much for working together on, I know you have like 100 programs around you.
Thank you, Chief, yes.
And we do have, Councilman Hernandez, I think, has a question or comment.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. It's something that reminded me here. The vaccines that we have that we're providing at the mall, what what types of vaccines do we have there?
We currently just have Moderna and Pfizer.
We're not going to get Johnson Johnson anymore?
Johnson and Johnson, they ran out of supplies, but starting September 1st, we can order again from the Department of State Health Services. So we will be ordering more Johnson and Johnson at that time.
Okay, and that kind of goes in line with my question on the effectiveness versus the Delta variant. You know, you want to get the one that's most effective, I guess. Maybe you order more of those. And lastly, on the reports that we get on a daily basis, there are some that say that are are confirmed and some that say are probable. How do we go back and confirm those that are probable, or they just remain probable?
They just remain probable. So a probable is a positive antigen. And a positive antigen in itself is a COVID-19 positive. So the probables and the confirmed, and I know it's it's confusing, it's just terminology that's used. They use the same terminology kind of during H1N1. So the confirmed is the gold standard, the positive PCR, it's confirmed, you know, there's not a lot of questions there. The probable is an antigen positive, and so which shows that they still have active COVID-19 virus. And so that's a probable. And then the suspects are the ones that have antibodies. And so these are individuals that if you just got your vaccine and you went to check your antibodies because you're getting elective surgery, you would come out as an antibody positive. They're really not part of our count.
I mean, they're all reported as positives, right?
They're all reported as positives, right.
We don't, we don't break them out, so, but we don't go back and confirm any of the probables or the suspect?
We don't go back to confirm. The probables are the suspects. So they're all counted as positive COVID-19. So but we know that the suspects, that they're antibody positive. So when we talk to them, like, they would not, we wouldn't be referring them for infusions, so.
So basically, they're all showing some symptoms of some reaction to what would normally be a COVID case, right?
Yes, but not
They're sick, they're fever, temperature, you know.
Except for the antibody positives. Those ones, they might just be going in because they need to have some kind of a surgical procedure.
So they may be positive but not sick?
That's correct. So they really wouldn't be what we consider a COVID positive. But they still count, according to the CDC definition, as a suspect. And so we put them down there, but our positives and to us are the confirmed and the probables.
Okay, so, you know, I just want to kind of confirm to what Commissioner, I mean, Councilman Pusly was was saying, as somebody being positive or have the antibodies or whatever it may be, and we count them, but they're not really sick. But are they contagious?
No, they're not contagious. They just have antibodies because they were vaccinated. So and those are the few numbers. You're going to see three of those suspect cases out of the 600. You're going to see five of those. So but it's still part of the definition, so that it's still
Okay, so we're, I guess what I'm getting at here is we're putting out a number of cases that, you know, we're saying are COVID positive, but there may not be sick.
That's correct. So.
Okay, I I think that may, I think we may even need to break that out, to say, you know, they're positive but not sick or something like that. Because I think by putting out these numbers and saying we got 400 today, I'm getting the impression, I was under the belief that they were all sick. And that they, you know, they had fever, they were isolated and stuff like that, but that's not the case.
No, that's not the case. But what I will say is that the majority of those 400 are sick COVID positives. You have a few that are in the suspect category, but according to the CDC definition, they meet the definition criteria.
The probable ones are sick.
The probable ones are sick, and the confirmed are sick, yes.
You know, and they have the temperature, social signs of the
Yes, well, you have some probables, I'm going to just be honest with you. You have some probables that are asymptomatic, but they still have to quarantine for the 10 days because they could still spread the virus. So while you're asking, do they have a temperature, are they sick, they don't all have to be. So if they're positive, they have to isolate for the 10 days, period. So even if they're asymptomatic.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is that I
Are they infectious?
What I want to make sure is that we're giving accurate information, that, you know, people are sick and are dying. And that's correct, but not, you know, I don't want to spread some kind of panic that everybody's, you know, getting, you know, is having a bad time of this, you know. So I I don't know how to best describe that.
You're following CDC guidelines, right?
We're following the CDC guidelines.
On how you report, we're not, you're not making this up locally.
No, I'm not saying that's the case. I mean, I just, I
I mean, we're following what the CDC guidelines say on how to report it.
Right, absolutely, following the guidelines.
And that's fine, I just, you know, from the perspective, from here, sitting here, I don't want people to panic over it.
Right, and that's not what we're trying to do. We're just trying to make sure that they understand that if there's 600 people COVID positive, those individuals are, the majority of them, maybe less two or three of the suspects because they just went to get an antibody test after they were vaccinated. They want to know if they have antibodies. All the others are infectious, and they're spreading the disease. They can spread the disease, and we have to report those, and so that's why it's on there. So.
Okay, thank you.
I think one more thing that's important is like Dr. Byrd, when he does his statistics, he only uses the confirmed. And I don't even think he uses the probables, but the probables are true COVID cases as well. So he uses confirmed case only to do a lot of his statistics.
Right, Annette, thank you so much. Thank you for taking the time to be here. It's very informative. As you can see, we have questions. But thank you. And I think, again, I'm going to say it again, because it's about trying to get as many people vaccinated who want to be. We're not trying to force anyone to get vaccinated, but we are, if you're on the fence. We're trying to get you to understand, like, with these graphics we were talking about, the facts are the facts. And it is unvaccinated people who are in the hospital, who are passing away. And so that's the bottom line, and and that's our part, our responsible part. So anyway, thank you for everything you're doing.
And thank you, Mayor, for the vaccines at home. That's really helping, and we appreciate all of your support.
Thank you, Annette.
All right, thank you, Annette. And Mayor and Council, yesterday I personally met with Annette to help expedite the $18 million grant that the city received to add more staff, temporary staff, to administer more vaccines. And so we know with the third shot coming up in September, we're going to need more help. And that grant should allow Annette to hire up to 1,000 more additional
To help vaccinate.
Right, it's just to help vaccinate. What's that?
Where would this be, like, it set up different, or the strike teams, that kind of thing?
So definitely at the at the mall, but also we're looking at additional venues. And then we're also looking at non venues, like pop up clinics, you know, that might be at the taquerias or might be at the churches. Right, so we definitely just need to have the consistency and the manpower to continue to try to vaccinate. That's the goal.
I love it, because we're taking, it's in home, I mean, in restaurant, in baseball game, in, you know, whatever.
Yeah, taking it out to the people.
Right, yeah. That's great.
So on on the city council agenda today, there's a $1 million contract with Unique Employment. And that'll begin, actually, we've already begun the hiring with a small, under $50,000 contract. But this is a $1 million for Unique. And then we're going to do two others in an emergency format that'll give it's kind of a nurse, all in one nurse, plus additional staff to help on all aspects of more vaccinations. So that's, yeah, so Annette's, Annette is about to get a lot more temporary folks, right, to help out the city county health district.
And that said, there's a program that my office has been working on, and I think, unfortunately, you know, I think more than I do, the Teen MVP Program, which is the Teen Mobile Vaccination Program, is kicking off next week, this week?
September 1st.
September 1st. That's right. We have so much going on. So that is, I think that's going to be extremely helpful for, that's a great example, right? The the personnel
The vaccination
To be able to go, they're going to, we've, we've, we have a a map, if you will, of high schools and middle schools. And we'll be taking vaccinations to the schools with permission slips going out beforehand. Parents can make that decision. And so it's going to be, I I pray it's going to be a good, a program, again, just to, you know, do our part and and try everything we can.
To protect these children.
Thank you for working with us on that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Annette.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, thanks, you, and then, Mayor and Council, our second item is just a quick recap on the community budget input work sessions. We know that from August 9th to August 18th, the city held five virtual community input sessions on the budget. There was one hosted by each city council member in each city council district. And those work sessions were on the fiscal year 2022 budget that I presented to council in late July. This is a second year in a row that we've used that format, but we had a significant number of persons attending, actually a 50% increase compared to the first time we did it a year ago. So we had over 330 residents attend those five meetings. Each community input, as I mentioned, was hosted by a district, by a city council member of that district. But the mayor and at large council members were faithful in attending every one of them as well. So good support from the council, as has been the case in the past two years, of getting out there with the community. The residents were able to livestream input on the city's YouTube page. They use Facebook, and they also use the city's public access channel, which is CCTV 20, Corpus Christi. They were able to message questions to us and leave comments through YouTube and Facebook. And they also called in Deanna McQueen, our communications director, did a great job moderating all those questions and comments. The feedback overall, we reviewed it, we have reviewed it after each work session, but recently the budget director and I looked at it. And the overwhelming input was more street money, right? I mean, it was different than the last two years, where there were other requests, like more library services and more park amenities. So a significant amount of just comments or inquiries about, let's get even more money, even though we have a record setting street maintenance budget. And as we have done in the past two years, based on that community input, we'll, we try to make adjustments to the budget. So I'm going to present to council this Thursday, a recommendation to increase even a little bit more the street maintenance budget. Our final property tax numbers are in now that those worksheets are completed. And we're going to have close to 900,000 available beyond what we budgeted initially, I talked to the council about initially, for property tax revenue. And we want to dedicate that to more residential street maintenance. So we'll talk more about that Thursday. Just in in total here, or the rest of the calendar, next week, at the city council meeting, or here in the city council chambers, we'll begin the two reading ordinance of the budget. So next week will be public hearings and a first reading on the budget, on the property tax rate, and on the stormwater fee as well. And then the second reading of the budget and adoption will be on September 7th, Tuesday, September 7th. That's that special meeting the city secretary talked to us about. And the budget that we're bent, that we have been working on, that council's been putting a lot of hours in, as as the community will take effect October 1, when city council approves it on the 7th. So with that, we're going to go to item number three, which is a quick update from Nieman on a new program that we talked to you a little bit about this morning in one of our budget work sessions. And that's the Connections to Assistance event that'll be taking place this Saturday at Flower Bluff with Councilman Smith and the mayor's assistants, so Nieman.
Thank you, sir. Council, I'm happy to announce that the Neighborhood Services Department will host its next Connections to Assistance event in Flower Bluff, Saturday, August 28th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. The Connections to Assistance event is unique in the fact that its target audience is to help working families or recently out of work families. What our intent is to actually bring resources and services to the community and assist those working families with gaining access to resources that assist with housing stability. The event will take place at Ethel Airley Senior Center, which is located at 654 Graham Road in Council District 4. So before you, it is a slide depicting some of the city departments and our community partners that will be cooperating in the event. Services will include rental assistance for residents experiencing housing instability due to the COVID-19 pandemic, microchipping for household pets, onsite pet adoptions, low cost spay and neuter vouchers from P A A C, city employment postings and information, and youth sports programs. In addition, code enforcement and public works will be there to provide education on code enforcement activities and stormwater information. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank some of our community partners that will be participating in the event. That includes the People Assistant Animal Control, which is PAC, the Flower Bluff Citizen Council, the Rising Tide Ministries, Workforce Solutions, and more importantly, Mr. Joe Kramer, who is one of our very vocal citizens down in Flower Bluff.
Very vocal.
Who's been working very hard
Love Joe Kramer.
Meeting with Tracy and myself, and making sure that we spread the word out in that community. So this is a slide just depicting the location for Ethel Airley Senior Center. Again, that's at 654 Graham Road. Protocols will be in place in the event to reduce the spread of COVID-19. This includes adhering to the guidelines established by the U.S. Center for Disease Control. For additional information regarding the Connections to Assistance program, you can go to www.cctexas.com/neighborhoodservices, or you can reach out to our interim director, Tracy Cantu.